John Larson, can you hear me?
Barely. Is that you, John?
Hear me, Mark?
Yeah, you're, you're really low. I don't know if you're not sitting close enough to the mic, or maybe I just need to turn my sound off. Jeff, can you talk to me for a minute? I knew yourself first, though, please.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can. Yeah. John just is really low in the mix.
Which John?
Larson. I'm turning him up a little bit. There we go. There's Brett. Hello, Brett.
Hello there. How are you, Mark?
Not too bad. Yourself?
Oh, I'm just splendid.
You say that with such enthusiasm. Who are we missing here? Jeff, we have Beth. Hi, Beth. John, did we hear from Lawson, whether he's going to attend or not?
I didn't hear from anyone.
Oh, okay. We'll give him a minute then. Well, that doesn't look like the town office, John. Must be Des Moines.
Hey, Brett.
Hey, Mark.
Hi, Beth.
You here?
I'm here.
All right. Let me find you here.
Awesome.
You're on the other page, okay?
I'm on.
Yeah, I see you now. I see you now. Yeah.
Let's go to the same page, Mark.
Yeah, that'll be different. We'll be on the same page, right? Okay. We all said we'll call the Tremont Planning Board meeting of December 14th, the order at 6:01. Roll call, and please answer. Beth Gott. You're muted, Beth. Still muted, Beth. I think she's here, though. Well, she figures that out. Jeff Young.
Yeah.
Brett Witham.
Here.
Lawson Wilson.
Here.
Myself, Mark Good, and our new CEO, John Larson. I believe Jesse Dembar is somewhere, our town manager, our old CEO, and Recording Secretary Jan Sprague. The applicants, they're representatives and members of the public. So we don't need to excuse any absences. I don't think we need to adjust the agenda unless somebody has any ideas otherwise. Okay. We'll go to the minutes of November 9. And I'll ask for a motion to approve them or amend them or amend them or whatever. They're quite lengthy. And some of that was because there were amendments made, I guess, and Jan recorded both the original and the the change, the amendment. But from what I could tell, he looked fine to me.
Good to me. Um, sorry, go ahead, Jeff.
Under item 7C in the campground moratorium, I think we asked that the selectmen see if they can divide us for an attorney or a consultant to help us through looking at language regarding the moratorium and campground issues. I think it should be reflected in the minutes.
Did we actually have a motion and did we approve that motion?
No, there was no motion made, just a consensus. That was good. Policy to follow.
Anybody else? Memory?
The other room, we talked about it.
I remember talking about it, but I don't remember taking any real action or even arriving at a consensus, but I could be wrong.
I, I don't remember. I don't, I just don't remember. I don't remember. I think, I don't remember if we voted on anything like that or
I know we didn't vote on anything. I'm sure of that.
I mean, we can add it to the agenda tonight.
Jeff? Do you feel strongly about this, Jeff?
I think it should be reflected that we asked Jesse to talk to him, see if we have someone retained to help us through this process. I think the minutes reflect that, you know, we talked about it, and it was a suggestion I made to go forward and do that.
You want to make an amendment?
Also move.
Could you, could you word that again, please?
Sure, Mark. I saw move that we meant the minutes as prepared to reflect the request was a suggestion request to ask Jesse to approach the selectmen for whether we could have an attorney or a consultant appear at our meetings to help us through the campground and moratorium issues.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Motion of second on the table to amend the minutes as stated. Any discussion? During that, I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Brett?
I don't know. I don't recall that discussion. I really don't. And I don't know that many of the minutes to add a suggestion actually does anything. So I'm going to say no.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Four to one. That was certainly amended, right, Jeff, that you could see?
Yes.
Okay. Public hearings. We have scheduled public hearings on the subdivision plan for the Timothy Gott and Sylvia Gott subdivision and for the the Alder Lane Amendment, subdivision amendment, and John suggested that instead of having separate public hearings, and I really doubt if we're going to get any comments on this, so we could hold them both at the same time concurrent rather than consecutive.
Mark, Mark?
Yes.
We moved to amend, but we didn't move to approve the minutes as amended.
Okay, okay, good touch. I'll take a motion for that.
I'll so move that we approve the minutes as amended of November 9.
I'll second.
The motion is second to table to approve the minutes of November 9th as amended. All in favor, Jeff?
Aye.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
No, I, I think I would say no, because, yeah.
Makes sense. You said no the last time, Beth.
Yes.
I don't really know what we're actually, I don't know what it means to suggest to, to Jesse that he talked to a lawyer. Like, I don't know if that actually tells him to do anything other than just talk to a lawyer. So, but yeah, I, I don't, I, I don't, I don't vote in favor of that. I think we should talk about it tonight, but that's fine.
Okay. We can do that. Okay, moving on, the public hearing, like I was saying, John suggested that we can hold these concurrently rather than separately. Anybody have any objections to that?
No.
Okay, that's what I'll do then. Open the public hearings on the final subdivision plan of land of Timothy H. Gott and Sylvia H. Gott and the amendment number four for the Alder Lane subdivision. I'll open that up at 6:00 PM. Anybody care to comment? About as expected, huh? Board members, anything to say? Nope. John, any, anything? Okay. Well, that being said, I'll call the public hearings on those two projects to a close at 6:00 and let's say PM. Moving on to old business, we have the findings of fact first for the subdivision application amendment to final subdivision plan of land of Timothy Gott and Sylvia H. Gott. And that's not actually owned by the Gottes. It's owned by, I can't remember now, Skull, David Skull. So certainly Beth Gott can participate in all this.
Well, is that true? I don't, I don't know.
What's that? Does that true?
Well, does that does Beth and, does Beth or her, the family have any ownership in the land or no?
No more, right, Beth?
Yeah, no.
That, that was my understanding from Jesse the last time, because I, I was wondering whether there was a conflict or not. And it's just, the name has stayed Timothy Gott, Sylvia Gott subdivision, but it's now, and Mr. Benson is somewhere on here. He can probably confirm this, that it's now owned by David Skull, correct? Tom? You're muted, Tom.
So you may have said, Mark, that she's not conflicted. I may have misunderstood you.
Oh, there's, yeah, there's no conflict.
Okay, okay, then fine. I thought you said there was, and I said, yeah, okay, fine, yeah.
Oh, no, there's no conflict.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. I wish Tom, oh, there's
I'm here now.
You're here now. Okay, great. It looks like you made some of the additions that we asked for, correct?
Well, I hope I made them all.
Yep, we do too. So you want to go through the findings of fact here? So anybody have any other questions first? Okay, we'll go through the findings of fact. As you folks are well aware, we need to have a vote on each one and in making a motion that we should include the reason for why we're find this met, not met, or not applicable. And we'll start off with pollution. The proposed subdivision will not result in undue water or air pollution in making this determination. It shall at least consider the elevation of the land above sea level and its relation to the floodplains, the nature of soils and subsoils, and their ability to adequately support wastewater, the slope of the land, and its effect on effluence, the availability of streams for disposal of effluence, and the applicable state and local health and water resources rules and regulations. Take a motion?
I'll, I'll move that the proposed subdivision meets the criteria set forth in our statute on pollution.
I'll second.
Motion is second on the table that the the application meets the criteria in our ordinance for pollution. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes. Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Was that Beth or Jeff?
I said Jeff, but yeah, I realize that kind of sounds like, right? We got Jeff. How about you, Beth?
Yes.
Okay, Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, sufficient water, proposed subdivision is sufficient water available for the foreseeable needs of the subdivision.
I'll make a motion that the proposed amendment will not have any effect on the water available for the needs of the subdivision. And then to get this condition has been met.
I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second on the table to find that the sufficient water condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. It's five zero. Municipal water supply. The proposed subdivision will not cause an unreasonable burden on existing water supply if one is to be used. There's no public water supply available, so it's not applicable, I guess. So I'll take a motion to that effect.
I'm with the provision on municipal water supply is not applicable because there's no municipal water supply available to premises.
I'll second.
Motion is second on the table to find the municipal water supply condition has been met because there's no public water supply available at the premises. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Brett, Beth?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Erosion. The proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or reduction in the landscape capacity to hold water so that a dangerous or unhealthy condition results.
I'll make a motion that the proposed amendment will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or reduction in the land's capacity to hold water. Since no clearing is proposed, no new construction is proposed.
Second.
Motion is second on the table to find the erosion condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Traffic. The proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion or unsafe conditions with respect to the or unsafe conditions with respect to the use of highways or public roads existing and proposed. And if the proposed subdivision requires driveways or entrances into, onto a state or state aid highway located outside the urban compact area of an urban compact municipality as defined by Title twenty-three, section seven-five-four, the Department of Transportation has provided documentation indicated that the driveway or entrances conform to Title twenty-three, section seven-oh-four, and any rules adopted under that section.
I move the proposed amendment does not cause any unreasonable highway or public congestion as it's only relocating a property line in the subdivision.
I'll second.
Motion is second on the table to find the traffic condition has been met because the proposed amendment will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion due to relocation of a property line. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jeff, call for vote?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Sewage disposal. The proposed subdivision subdivision will provide for adequate sewage waste disposal and will not cause an unreasonable burden on municipal services if they are utilized.
I'll move that this is, has been met as the amendment that's not, has an existing subsurface water waste disposal system. It would not increase that impact.
I'll second.
Motion is second on the table to find the sewage disposal condition has been met because there's an existing subsurface wastewater disposal system on site. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Municipal solid waste disposal, the proposed subdivision will not cause an unreasonable burden on the municipality's ability to dispose of solid waste if municipal services are to be utilized. It's not applicable, obviously, I'll take a motion to that effect.
I'll move that the municipal solid waste disposal standard is not applicable as there's no municipal solid waste disposal affecting the premises.
I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion is second to find the municipal solid waste disposal condition is not applicable because there's no municipal solid waste disposal for that particular location. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
And myself, yes. A study cultural and natural values. The proposed subdivision will not have an undue adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area, aesthetics, historic sites, significant wildlife habitat identified by the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife or the municipality, or rare and irreplaceable natural areas, or any public rights away for physical or visual access to the shoreline.
I move that the, move, the adjustment of a property line within the subdivision will not have an undue adverse effect on the natural, including historical sites, wildlife habitat.
We have a second?
Yes, second.
Motion is second on the table to find the steady cultural and natural values condition has been met because adjustment of a property line will not have, have effect on any of those conditions or any of those values. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Brett? Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Conformity with local ordinances and plans, a proposed subdivision conforms with a duly adopted subdivision regulation or ordinance, comprehensive plan, development plan, or land use plan, if any, in making this determination, the municipal reviewing authority may interpret these ordinances and plans. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion that the, the proposed amendment conforms to the duly adopted subdivision regulation or, and ordinance, the plan, development plan, and land use plan.
Motion is second on the table to find the conformity with local ordinances and plans, conditions has met, and met for the stated reason, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Financial and technical capacity, subdivision has adequate financial, spell wrong, and technical capacity to meet the standards of this section.
I'll move that the, this is net, in that the applicant already owns the lot with the lot line being relocated. I'll second.
Motion is second on the table to find the financial and technical capacity condition has been met because the applicant already owns the lot that, that has been created. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Surface waters outstanding river segments. We know this is not applicable, so do you really, really need me to read through all that?
Nope.
Just go to a motion.
I'll make a motion that no portion of the subdivision is within the watershed of any pond or lake, and therefore, this is not applicable.
Motion is second on the table to find the surface waters outstanding river segments condition is not applicable because no portion of the subdivision is within the watershed of any pond or lake. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Groundwater, the proposed subdivision will not alone or in conjunction with existing activities adversely, adversely affect the quality or quantity of groundwater.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that the, the amendment will not affect quality, quality or quantity of groundwater, and this condition has been met.
Second.
What state of reason with that?
Because the existing subdivision, the proposed single-family residence would not adversely affect groundwater.
Thank you. Motion is second on the table to find the groundwater condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Flood areas. It's not applicable, I don't think I need to read that, I'll take a emotion.
I'll move in light of the fact that there's the, no portion of subdivision is in a flood zone, the criteria for flood areas is not applicable.
Second.
Motion is second on the table to find the flood area condition is not applicable because no portion of the subdivision is located within a flood zone. Where the flood zone, freshwater wetlands. All freshwater wetlands within the proposed subdivision have been we just, sorry, rushing right through. I want to get through this, we have two of them to do. Okay, I'll call for a vote then. Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes, not applicable, sorry, thanks, keep me in my toes, Lawson. Freshwater wetlands, all freshwater wetlands within the proposed subdivision have been identified on any map submitted as part of the application regardless of the size of these wetlands. Any mapping of freshwater wetlands may be done with the help of local soil and water conservation dis-
I'll make a motion that all freshwater wetlands have been identified on the plan submitted as part of the application. And this condition has been met.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second on the table to find the freshwater wetlands condition has been met because all freshwater wetlands have been identified on the plan. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Next one's not applicable either, River, River Stream or Brook. Any River Stream or Brook within or abutting the proposed subdivision has been identified on any map submitted. I'll, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that no River Stream or Brook is, exists within this subdivision. So this is not applicable.
Motion is second on the table to find the River Stream or Brook condition is not applicable because there's no River Stream or Brook within or abutting the subdivision. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Stormwater, the proposed subdivision will provide for adequate stormwater management.
I've moved that the proposed subdivision as proposed follows best practices for an adequate stormwater management for the future development of the property.
Second.
Motion and a second on the table to find the stormwater condition has been met for the stated reason, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Spaghetti lots prohibited, I'll take a motion on that.
I'll make a motion that this condition is not applicable because no portion of the subdivision is located within the shoreline zone.
Second.
Motion is second on the table, find that the spaghetti lots prohibited or prohibition is not applicable because no portion of the subdivision is located in the shoreline zone. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Not applicable. Lake phosphorus concentration, here's another one.
I'll make a motion that lake phosphorus concentration condition is not applicable because no portion of the proposed amendment is located near a great pond. Second.
Motion is second on the table to find the lake phosphorus concentration condition is not applicable because no portion of the proposed amendment is located near a great pond. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Jeff Young?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Brett Withham?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Impact on adjoining municipality is another one, folks.
I'll move that this is not the standard as to impact on joint personality. Municipality is not applicable as it is not abutting to a, a joining person, municipality.
Second.
Motion and second on the table to find the impact on adjoining municipality condition is not applicable because no portion of the proposed amendment joins municipality, another municipality. Land subject, I'll call for a vote here.
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes, okay. And subject to liquidation harvesting.
Can I just dive in and make a motion about that the liquidation harvesting condition has been met because no timber harvest on the parcel has occurred?
A second.
Motion is second on the table to find the land subject to liquidation harvesting condition has been met because no timber harvest on the parcel has occurred. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. All right. Now, we need a motion to approve the amendment to the subdivision application.
Sorry, you ready, Mark?
Yeah, I'm ready, sorry, I dropped something.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve amendment number one to the subdivision application for Timothy H. Gott and Sylvia H. Gott Route one-oh-two and Richtown Road. As amended and using sort of these findings of fact as the exhibit.
Is it?
Did I hear a second, Beth, did you?
Well, I thought it was amendment, meant number four.
Um.
Or is it one?
Right, we're talking about yeah, this is number one.
This is number one, yes.
Okay.
The other one is number four, but
Number one is number four, okay, I'm all set.
Okay.
Would you like to second that then?
I will second that.
Okay. Motion is second on the table to approve the amendment number one to the subdivision, subdivision application Timothy H. Gott Sylvia H. Gott Route one-oh-two and Richtown Road. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Five zero. Okay. That's that one, and remember, folks, we're gonna have to go in and sign those plans. Maybe John can let us know. And moving right along with excitement here, we'll go to finding some facts for amendment number four for the Alder Lane subdivision.
Okay.
Findings of fact are pretty much the same, Beth.
Yeah.
To get confused.
Yes, I am. It's all right.
Okay. Before I get started here, any questions, any anything you want to ask Mr. Benson? I guess not, let's move ahead, pollution. The proposed subdivision will not result in undue water or air pollution. And I won't even read the whole thing unless you want me to try to move this along.
I'll, I'll make a motion that this condition has been met because the proposed amendment will not have any undue effect on water or air pollution based on new new structures that are proposed.
Motion is second on the table to find the pollution condition has been met because there no new structures proposed here. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Sufficient water? The proposed subdivision has sufficient water available for foreseeable needs of the subdivision? Take a motion for that? Take a motion for that?
I'll make a motion that this condition has been met because the proposed amendment will not have any effect on water available for the needs of the subdivision.
Second, please. Did somebody second it?
I did.
Okay. Motion, a second on the table to find the sufficient water condition has been met. For the stated condition, reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Municipal water supply. The proposed subdivision will not cause an unreasonable burden on existing water supply.
I move that the requirement for municipal water supply is not applicable. About what premises, the public water supply premises.
Through all this. Somebody needs to be muted there.
Can I ask a question?
Why not? Go ahead.
Beth has ownership on adjoining land. I just don't want to go through this and have it thrown out. Is that something you guys need to discuss?
That's true. They, yeah. And Beth recused herself, I think.
You did do that. Okay.
Thanks, Tom.
That's my fault for not remembering that. Sorry. Beth, you want to recuse yourself?
Yes, I recuse myself from this one.
Okay. So. We should probably go back and revisit those first two conditions. So the vote reflects her recusal. What do you think? Board? So I think we should do it. John, you have an opinion?
The vote should reflect. Four zero four. Zero one.
Yeah, okay, so let's go back and do it.
Well, it's not even one because she abstained, recused herself, so she's not there.
Right, right. Okay, it's four zero, it should say, yes. So let's go back and revisit those. Start with a clean slate.
I'll make a motion. So we're gonna start with pollution condition. I'll make a motion that the condition number one for pollution has been met. Because there will not, the proposed amendment will not have any undue effect on water or air pollution because no new structures.
Okay, motion and second on the table to find the pollution pollution condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? I only have one question. Should we? Make that an amendment? Since we already voted on these two? It's not clear to me. John, you have any opinion on that?
Do not.
What's that? I'm sorry.
No, I have no opinion.
Okay. Okay, let's just vote on it then. I'll call for a vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Efficient water.
I'll make a motion that the proposed amendment will not have any effect on water available for the needs of the subdivision. The subdivision has been met.
Motion, a second table to find the sufficient water condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay. Municipal water supply.
I'll move that the requirement addressing municipal water supply is not applicable as there's no public water supply available at. Subject premises.
Have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second on the table to find the municipal water supply condition is not applicable. Because there's no public water supply available. All in favor? Jeff?
Aye.
Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Erosion. The proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or reduction in the land's capacity to hold water. So that a dangerous or unhealthy condition results.
I move that the erosion standard has been met as the proposed. Changes involve no new clearing or and no new construction.
Have a second?
Second.
Find that the. We have a motion second on the table to find that the erosion condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Traffic.
I, I. One, I'll move that the proposed amendment will not cause unreasonable highway or public congestion. Due to its relocating a property line within the subdivision.
Second.
Motion, a second on the table to find the traffic condition has been met. Because there's no unreasonable highway or public road congestion. Congestion due to the relocating of a property line. Any discussion? Hearing none? Call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Sewage disposal.
I'll make a motion that the test pit locations were suitable subsurface. Suitable subsurface sewage disposal sites are located on the plan and that is part of the application and. This condition has been met.
Second.
Motion, a second on the table to find the sewage disposal condition has been met for the stated reason. And I'm not gonna go through that tongue twister. There's suitable subsurface sewage disposal site. That's very good, Lawson. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Up. Mark, I'll move the next one that is not that the municipal solid waste disposal requirement. Is not applicable as there's no municipal solid waste disposal.
Second.
Okay, motion is second to find that the municipal solid waste disposal condition is not applicable. Because we don't have municipal solid waste disposal at the site. All in favor? I mean, I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, aesthetic, cultural and natural values.
I'll make a motion that the. Proposed amendment will not have an undue adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area or aesthetics. No historic sites, significant wildlife habitat as identified by the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife or the municipality or. Rare and irreplaceable natural areas or any public rights away for physical or visual access to the shoreline exist in this subdivision.
Second.
Motion, a second on the table to find the aesthetic, cultural, natural values condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Conformity with local ordinances and plans.
The, I'll make a motion that the. Proposed amendment conforms to a duly adopted subdivision regulation and ordinance. The cop plan, development plan and land use plan. This condition has been met.
Second.
Motion, a second on table to find that the conformity with local ordinances and plans condition has been met. For the stated reason, any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Financial and technical capacity.
I'll move that the financial, technical capacity requirement has been met as the applicant already owns the lot. With the lot line being, that lot lines being relocated.
Second.
Motion, a second on the table to find the financial and technical capacity condition has been met. Because the applicant already owns the lot with the lot line being relocated. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call. Call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Surface waters outstanding river segments.
I'll make a motion that no portion of this subdivision is within the watershed of any pond or lake. Therefore, this condition is not applicable.
Second.
Motion, a second on the table to find the surface waters outstanding river segments condition is not applicable. Because no portion of subdivision is within the watershed of any pond or lake. Any discussion? I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Groundwater. Proposed subdivision will not alone or in conjunction with existing activities adversely adversely affect the quality or quantity of groundwater.
I'll make a motion that this condition has been met because the proposed amendment will not affect the quality or quantity of groundwater. The existing subdivision, it is an existing subdivision and the potential single family residents would not adversely affect the groundwater.
Motion, a second on the table to find the groundwater condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Yeah.
Myself, yes. Flood areas.
I'll move that the flood area provision is not applicable. Is that no portion of subdivision is located in a flood zone.
Motion, a second to find the flood area condition has been met or not applicable, I mean. Because no portion of subdivision is located in the flood zone. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Vote, go ahead.
There is a little portion in the subdivision. The northwest corner of Lot Nine has a little finger of Zone A.
Thanks. Thanks, Tom. So I'll make a motion that this condition has been met. Do we have to? Yeah.
Well, hold on a second here. Where are you pointing at? What are you looking at there, Tom? Lot Nine?
Lot Nine, it's the northwest corner of Lot Nine. Did you get the revised plan?
I assume that's what I have here, yes.
It should say Zone A. See the cross.
I see it. Yes, I do see it. Yeah.
Yep. That's it. That's the only area.
So. It is applicable then.
Nope.
Correct?
I mean, it's applicable and met.
And met, okay. So we, did we vote on that? We do vote on that, right?
No.
Oh, flood areas. Okay, I'm looking at the wrong one here. Sorry.
I think we need to amend this motion.
Yeah.
Put a condition in.
Yeah, I think you're right.
That the condition is that. Structures will be constructed at the lowest level, including the basement, at least one hundred foot above the. Under ear flood elevation. Is that okay, Tom?
One foot above the flood elevation.
Yeah, yeah, you said a hundred.
I'm sorry. Yeah, wow. Have a new mountain.
You know, rising seawater, right?
Yes.
Okay. So did you make the motion?
Yes, I did.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have motion, a second on the table to find the flood area condition has been met for the stated reason.
With a condition.
With that condition. Which is part of the reason, okay. It's the condition, okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Freshwater wetlands.
I move that the freshwater wetlands have been identified in the plan as required. On the plan submitted as required.
All second.
Motion, a second on the table to find the freshwater condition, wetlands. Condition has been met because they've been identified on the plan as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. River, stream or brook?
Um, Tom, I just wanted to confirm that Webster Brook ends before that. Like doesn't actually go into the. The property, is that correct? Do you, are you familiar with, like where flood zone A is, is sort of the headwaters of? That brook and I'm just want to make sure that you checked to make sure that that's actually not an apple brook that's in the, on the site. You there, Tom?
That's really just a wetland. There was really no defined brook in this area.
Cool. All right. Then I'll make a motion that there is no river stream or brook within the abutting subdivision. And this condition is not applicable.
Have a second? Motion, a second on the table to find the river stream or brook condition is not applicable. Because there are no river streams or brooks within or putting the subdivision. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Stormwater. The proposed subdivision will provide for adequate stormwater management. Do I ever have a motion?
I'll make a motion that the proposed subdivision amendment will follow best practices for adequate stormwater management for future development. And no proposed development is, no development is proposed this time.
Motion, a second on the table to find the stormwater condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Spaghetti lots prohibited.
I'll move that the spaghetti lot restriction is not applicable as no portion of the subdivision is located. In a shoreline zone.
Motion, a second to find the spaghetti lots prohibition is not applicable. Because no portion of the subdivision is located in the shoreline zone. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Lake phosphorus concentration.
I'll make a, a motion that no portion, that since no portion of this proposed amendment is located near a great pond, this condition is not applicable.
Motion, a second to find the lake phosphorus concentration condition is not applicable. Because no portion of the amended subdivision is located near a great pond. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, impact on adjoining municipality?
I'll move.
Another easy one. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Jeff.
Those subdivision does not impact on adjoining first municipality as it does not. But in a joining municipality.
Second.
Motion, a second on the table to find that. The impact on an adjoining municipality condition is not applicable in this case. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And myself, yes. All right. Do more to do here. Land subject to liquidation harvesting.
I'll make a motion that since no timber harvest has occurred on this parcel. This condition is I guess is either has been met or maybe it's, I guess I'll make a motion that it's not applicable.
Second.
Motion and second on the table to find the land subject to liquidation harvesting condition is not applicable. Uh, any discussion? But you know, did we find this, we find this met on the last application?
Yeah, I'm just checking that.
We found it to be met.
Right.
It's, and I thought at the time, I thought it's probably not applicable, but you know, whatever. I thought it was six of one half dozen of the other, basically.
Well, then let's do, we did six on the last one. We'll do half a dozen on this one.
Okay. Call for a vote then, Jeff?
Yes.
It's not applicable. Okay, let me write that down. Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay. One more. A motion to approve the amendment number four to the subdivision application.
I'll make a motion to approve amendment number four subdivision application for Alder Lane subdivision as amended with these findings of fact.
Second.
Motion and second on the table to approve amendment number four to the Alder Lane subdivision. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. That's four zero. All right, Tom, you all set there?
Yes, thank you. When will these be ready to pick up?
Well. Where's John Larson? There he is. John, when do you think he will be ready to sign?
So does Jan has the minutes ready. She has the fine, she types up the findings of fact.
Okay, yeah. So we really can't give Tom an idea of when that will be then.
Somebody can get up. Jesse, John can get ahold of me.
I will.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Okay for you then, Tom? Yeah, okay. Okay, want to new business. Pointy head site plan review application now. We all know that there's a campground moratorium in effect and that we first have to make a decision about whether this application is a campground or not before we proceed. So. Maybe we can first ask Mr. Bear to explain why this isn't a campground. And if it isn't a campground, what is it?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday I forwarded to you a response to Attorney Collegi's letter that I didn't receive until last Friday, although I guess it was filed around the 10th of November concerning this issue. I hope that you've all had a chance to see that.
I have.
I haven't.
Yes, I did.
Thank you. So. There are a few landmarks here along the way. I think that we need to be cognizant of, and then we'll get to the definition of the ordinance. When you read the definition, I don't think that what you see in front of you is now or ever was a campground. When Madeline, the applicant, went to the town office to meet with who we refer to in our memo as the former code officer, who's now again the code officer, Mr. Larson. He's the one who made the determination that it was a campground. Madeline has never believed that what she was proposing was a campground. It's not a place where people drive RVs onto it. They don't have tents. There are cabins essentially. It doesn't have the hallmarks of the concerns of a campground that I was hearing when I listened to your meetings in the past. There aren't RVs that are careening down the road. There aren't outdoor fire pits with smoke. There aren't vehicles getting stuck in the mud. There aren't people running amok. It is as in fact, Mr. Young, member Young commented last time we were speaking with you over Zoom. He made the comment that he didn't think this was a campground. And Madeline has never thought it was a campground. And when you then go to the definition of campground in your ordinance, it does not describe what this application portrays. Rather, it is a commercial use. It's a transient accommodation. It's more akin to a motel than it is to a campground. And so the ordinance, excuse me, the moratorium ordinance that has been enacted since November 2nd or actually since August specifically references the town's ordinance definition of campground. And I guess for the record, if you would, I'd like just to, to read that for everybody's benefit. Campground is defined as an area or tract of land to accommodate two or more parties in temporary living quarters, including but not limited to tents, recreational vehicles or other shelters. That's all it says. That's the definition. Some of the important words in that definition, aside from tents, recreational vehicles, are temporary living quarters. We're not proposing but for two tent platforms, which will be, the tents will be removed in the winter months perhaps, but these are not temporary living quarters. These are not camps that are erected, tents that are erected or RVs that are brought onto the site and, and moved around on and off the site. They're not temporary at all. They're going to be there and they're going to be in their locations permanently. So there's nothing about this definition. And if you think there is, please tell me what it is. But I don't think there's anything about that definition that fits our application. In fact, I would suggest to you that when you read the next definition in that ordinance called camp sites, it says camp sites are any plot of ground within a campground. There are no campsites here. We have cabins. We have structures with beds in them. That's it. You know, none of the accoutrements that you would find typically with a campground. So the fact that we had applied and were called a campground two years ago, even six months ago, when we last in front of you, I guess it was April, we weren't talking about a moratorium against campgrounds. It really was not of importance to us what you called us. And the mere fact that we were pushed down this road to be called a campground shouldn't be something that we bear the burden of now. We didn't select that. We didn't promote that. In fact, you know, our, you've heard us say before, our reservation plans is to be Airbnb. The people will come, there'll be two to a cottage, that's it. So we, we, we didn't really care if, if we had to be considered a campground, that was fine with us. We didn't care. We knew what we were, what our business plan was and what we were proposing. Now it is important. So we drill down a little harder and say, no, we're going to push back. We are not a campground. We never were a campground, but we are not now a campground. And that's the sum and substance of it. The moratorium specifically cites that definition that I've read to you, and we would contend that we do not fall within that definition. That's all.
Thank you. Board, you have questions for Mr. Bear? I do, Ed. You mentioned that the definitions, any area or tract of land to accommodate two or more parties in temporary living quarters, including but not limited to tents, recreational vehicles or other shelters. So why isn't what you're doing, why doesn't it fall within the other shelter? Part of the definition?
I don't know what other shelters might, might be intended to describe. There are probably lots of ways that, that people can accommodate themselves at campgrounds. I, I don't know, Mr. Chairman. If, if you, if you were to take what we propose to do, and instead of having 11, 12, 15 cottages or cabins, and you were to line them up cheek to jowl right next to one another, would you call that a campground? Or would you call that a motel?
It might depend on the facilities.
Okay. What type of facilities does a campground typically have? We, the only thing that, that could remotely suggest we are a campground is that we have chosen to have a singular bathroom shower facility. And there are lots of bed and breakfasts that have that arrangement as well. Everybody doesn't have a shower in their own room.
No, but I don't believe they have to leave their, where they're sleeping, I mean, or, or staying for the night to go outside to a separate building to actually use the bathroom.
Well, maybe not. Does that make it a campground? Does it, does it, Mr. Chairman, that just because somebody says, oh, I've got to go outside to go potty, now all of a sudden it's a campground? It's not a campground. But what else about it? But you know, look at that definition.
We just approved a campground. It has some of the same things that you're describing. That's a campground.
Well, let, let's, let's back up.
And you're saying this is not a campground.
No, no, hold on a moment. What you just approved, as I understand it, started out with RVs, tents and some cabins like ours. But it definitely had the hallmarks that I described of a campground. And the fact is, they didn't change what they were presenting to you. They didn't, they chose not to change the name of it when they pared away the uses that seemed to be most offensive. Uh, that's fine. That doesn't mean that that either is a campground. That's just the way they proceeded. But it started out with all the hallmarks of it, and you can't deny that. They continued with the same application, just amending it. But it started out with RVs, and it started out with tents, and it started out with outdoor pits and volleyball courts and all sorts of things that we don't have. We simply don't have those things.
We could go back to an earlier version of that campground, the one on the Kellytown Road, which has none of those things you're describing. It just had cabins or yurts and very similar to what you're describing. You said there are bathroom facilities in each unit.
And?
And I'd say that's if that's a campground, what you're proposing seems to be a campground. Board members, any comments here, questions?
What is he exactly proposing? I mean, are they going to have cabins or tent sites? Or are you going to have RVs? Or exactly what, what do they propose on having?
Thank you. Thank you for asking. And I'll say.
One second. Beth, did you get the, the application?
Yes, I did. But I really can't you know, see exactly what they're, I mean, he mentions RVs and tents and.
He said no RVs, no.
I mentioned those, I mentioned those, Scott, as things that we are not.
Not having.
We don't have RVs. We don't have tents. We don't have outdoor campgrounds. We don't have the recreation areas.
Are we supposed to take the present application? And that you filed for this tonight and join it with the previous one that was filed back, I think it was August at the cartoon type pictures of boats in a tree and so forth and tree houses. Are these to be read together?
No. And it wasn't August. I think it was more like April. But no, this, this application stands on its own, Mr. Young.
This one, so it has nothing to do with the prior?
No.
filings?
No.
In the land use ordinance, in Article Five, it lists, you know, other land use activities and their standards. That's where campground is under Article Five subsection D. Campsite is E. I'm looking at K. Like it's there. I don't know what a boatel is. I've never heard of that. I guess it's like a, maybe a floating hotel.
Right?
It talks about hotels, motel. It also mentions cabins and cottages and et cetera, which is a great word to have in a regulation, et cetera. Love it. But it's there. I don't know what it means, but must mean something. I was looking for the definition of cabin or cottage. I don't see it. I recall we were talking about campgrounds. There was some discussion about whether it had a kitchen facilities and whether it was a, that made it a dwelling or not. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to piece all that together. Can anyone help? Ed, can you help me do that at all?
Well, I, I get, we're not, we're not dwelling, certainly. We don't have kitchen facilities. We don't have indoor plumbing. Yeah, we are what I think you would call cabins. We are the dictionary definition of, of a cabin or a camp would probably be fit us. The, the ordinance also just allows general commercial uses. And if I can find that section for you.
Well, yeah, it, it says cabins and cottages may be considered as commercial uses to a principal residence or to a principal resident, residential or commercial use. Mark, I'm just trying to figure out what I've never, we've never been in that, but K here, I don't know what it'd be, you know, we don't have any. I don't think we have any hotels over here in Tremont or motels or motel.
No, no, no. I think the only thing would be rental cottages or rental cabins.
And. So I'm trying to figure out like what that, I want to know what that is. I don't know what that is, yeah, I guess.
A cabin or cottage, you mean?
Yeah, I mean, I kind of have an idea, you know, but I, you know, I'm trying to figure out, does it, it doesn't look like it's a defined. You know, what's the difference between a cabin and a yurt?
Well, th- these are good questions, Brett.
That's why I'm asking.
And I, I've wondered in that, et cetera has bothered me under K as well. You know, I, I think under K, cabins and cottages are essentially residential dwelling units that you stay in, transients stay in. That's the way I would interpret it.
I, so in the definitions, hotel, motel, boatel, cabins, cottages defined.
It is it, is it?
It is, page 74 of 85.
Yeah.
Saying that it's a building or group of buildings containing rooms which are used or rented for sleeping purposes by transients.
Yeah.
And that to me seems like pretty, pretty clear what that is and and that it what Ed's describing seems to apply that I would.
Oh, there it is. Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, so, so they define it as one big group of words. Okay, even the et cetera is there too. Love it.
Yep, it's still there. Right, they're defining et cetera, which, yeah.
And because we're having this difficulty, it sort of points up the, the fact that zoning generally is contrary to the common law notion that a person can do what they want with their property. A moratorium is the extreme of that. It's telling you exactly what you cannot do. Unfortunately for us, we do not fall within that prohibition. We are not a campground. But for you, you've got to narrowly construe, I think, what a campground is. Personally, I don't think it's a close call. I understand that we're struggling with it, and I think it's in part because we were before you in the past with that characterization. But I would suggest to you that it was a time when it wasn't nearly as important as it is now.
Is a building defined anywhere?
Tractored. I don't believe building is defined, it's structure.
I tell you, I mean, I can kind of connect the dots here a little bit. I mean, you know, of course what we have now, I mean, you have a moratorium that's you know, aimed at campgrounds. But probably, you know, and so now you're going to have, we're going to have unintended consequences and, you know, people, you know, working around it and I I don't. I don't. K means something, you know, that the five K, it's there, it means something. And if and if K and the and the definition is more appropriately describes what they're doing than campgrounds, that, you know, but I I'm not there yet. I'm just throwing it out there.
Right. Jeff Young, you have anything to say? Any opinion?
I I I still struggle with the other structures and so forth in the definition part of campgrounds and and distinguishing this different from that.
Well, other structures.
Of the shelter, I'm sorry.
Well, I think we know from the ordinance that if they had intended it to be cabins and camps, they could have said that because they use those words in other places.
Yeah, I mean, I feel that. That's why I wish we had a. I wish a lot of things, but I mean, in others, I, yeah, I think what Ed's saying, Jeff, is the more specific language, you know, is generally going to prevail over something more general like a structure. I mean, you've got to say, okay, are these things structures or are they cabins? You know, a structure can be like a lean to, like in a campsite, you know, they tend to be kind of rough, you know, I could see like a lean to being a structure or sometimes you have like just a four-posted thing with a roof. I'm just just looking at kind of plain language.
You know, we do have an option here.
Yeah.
Instead of struggle struggling with us tonight to come up with an answer, we could table this and ask for an illegal opinion, you know, ask for a legal opinion uh, on it and some guidance from somebody.
It's a really close call. I mean, I they make a good point. I, you know, I like I said, I think K has to mean something, otherwise it wouldn't be there, and it's separate and distinct from campgrounds. So.
But I had the impression that I mean, if you if you want to seek legal legal counsel, that that's obviously your prerogative, but from Mr. Larson's email, it seemed like he had reached out to the town's attorney and said, hey, but to make their decision. That's what his memo to you seem to suggest to me.
Yeah, well, that wasn't done. She has offered to give a legal opinion if we ask for one tonight.
Okay.
There was some confusion there because we have a changeover in CEO, so.
Mr. Chair, are you taking comments from the butters or the public?
No, Mr. Plaguey, not right now. I believe I put I put I believe everybody received a copy of your letter.
The Board of Appeals has ruled on this issue previously.
Pardon?
Your Board of Appeals, Cynthia and Steve Lawson appealed the Kellytown Road campground, arguing that it was not because it was for cabins at the time, it's subsequently become yurts. The Lawsons argued to the Board of Appeals that it was not a campground and that it fell within the section that Mr. Witham just talked about, and it should have been regulated as a different use. The Board of Appeals found that they did not meet their burden of proof and called it a campground. And it was cabins and it was like they're different cabins from this application, but they're cabins on a piece of land, and they found it to be a campground. That's Tremont law.
I don't know about that.
I don't know that the I I suspect there are probably different facts. I mean, are we really bound by, like, is there? Spell it out, Dan. Is there like an opinion we can go look at?
Sure, of course there is. There are findings of fact and a denial of the of the appeal in that matter.
Yeah, that was on the Kellytown.
For that to be binding, you have to have the basically the exact same facts, right? I mean, you can't.
There there's no difference, and I'm asking the board to act consistent, to treat its ordinance consistently. That's all. It's all I'm asking.
We can ask our lawyer to look at that as well, too, maybe, Mark.
Yes, I you know, why don't we just get a legal opinion and go from there unless somebody has other ideas?
I think it's smart. I just think we're in a very, very tender situation here.
You got it, Beth.
Could I could could Dan or anybody who knows give me just some point of reference so that I can easily find that that decision of the board?
Board of Appeals right after the approval of the Kellytown uh, part of the campground. And I do not remember exactly when that was. I'm guessing almost two years ago, a year and a half ago. The town office will know.
Thank you.
Okay. So what do you think? You want to make a motion?
Again, Mr. Bear, how how do you how do you how do you handle the the portion of definitions about living quarters, temporary living quarters, under the campsite campground definition?
My my view is that temporary refers to the living quarter. In other words, you you set up a tent. It's temporary. You take it down and you leave. You drive in an RV or haul in a camper. You're there for a while. You leave. The shelter on site is temporary.
It can't be temporary time. You're there for a temporary period of time.
That's a transient accommodation.
Can you be there for a temporary period of time?
Yeah, it's transient accommodation. And the structure remains. You come and go.
And for for clarity purposes, on your memorandum that you submitted to us yesterday, whenever we got it today. Would you? The last paragraph, concluding paragraph, says that it is not campground as defined by the moratorium ordinance?
Yeah, correct. The moratorium ordinance simply cites you to the land use ordinance definition of a campground and nothing more.
Okay.
So the moratorium uses the man use definition of campground that we've been discussing.
I thought that was your point. I wasn't sure. Wasn't clear to me.
Anything else, Jeff?
Nope. I think it's I think it would be worthwhile tabling and getting some legal advice in on this application at this stage.
Okay. I'll take a motion to that effect, and also please include uh, the Board of Appeals decision.
Before you make that motion, I can give you a reference. It was a Cady Wilderness Lodge application. The Board of Appeals hearing was July eighteen, twenty nineteen.
July eighteen, twenty nineteen.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, did you want to make that motion?
I'm not quite sure what I want to say, you know, like.
Okay. Ponder it then.
Oh, we there's there's complications on this because we have the whole moratorium issue to discuss, and we get a possible public hearing coming up on that. And we have this issue, and we want him on the same night. We won't have an extra meeting between now and whenever then is then then. So I maybe we should discuss that generally so we can figure out what works here. We could do a tabling until an indefinite date. I mean, that that's fine with me.
I now I would table it tonight and have the and ask our attorney to render an opinion on on both the applicability of the of, you know, however we want to say it. The K or the camp versus campground, the hotel motel, et cetera, versus campground. And also into whether, you know, the this prior opinion of the appeals board has any binding effect on anything we do.
I I know our attorney or the one we've been using for the planning board is going to be out of town until the end of the month, pretty much. I don't remember when she starts, but she won't be back till December thirty first, so we wouldn't get anything until January anyway, an opinion, I'm sure.
So I'm going to move the table consideration of the pointy head site plan review application pending engagement of our council to render an opinion on the applicability of the campground versus hotel motel cabins cottages provisions in the land use ordinance. First, and secondly, to render an opinion with respect to the applicability and binding effect of the prior opinion of the appeals board. And I forget the date, whatever date Dan it said.
July eighteenth, twenty nineteen.
Yeah, yeah.
Set the motion?
Yep.
I second that.
Motion and second on the table to table any further action on this pointy head project until we get a legal opinion for the stated reasons. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Five zero. Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Next item. Planning board meeting schedule. We have the new schedule here. I guess we basically need a motion to approve it. We think it's okay. Mr. Larson said because of scheduling and holidays, we only have one meeting in February. And we could always schedule another one. We feel that we need to do that, so. And I I feel that's the case throughout the calendar. I think we're all set.
Where 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 did we have this? It wasn't my package.
No.
I didn't have it. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry. It's it's basically. I don't want to read the whole schedule to you. Is there something you're concerned about, or it's basically the same two meetings in January, the eleven twenty fifth, eleventh and twenty fifth?
It's like our past schedule?
Yeah, yeah, on Tuesdays, yeah.
And just start in January?
Twice a month, starting in January on the eleventh, the first meeting's the eleventh of January.
Okay, fine.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve this if we're all set.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two planning board meeting schedule I submitted by CEO Larson.
Motion and second to approve the twenty twenty-two planning board meeting schedule. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Oh, Lawson, were you gonna say something? I saw your light come on there. Okay, Jeff.
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Five zero, okay, and last item here pretty much is as you you probably remember that we discussed the campground moratorium and some possible changes to the standards and the ordinance regarding campgrounds based on the moratorium. I wanted to correct one thing that I said the last meeting, though. When I figured the hundred eighty days for the moratorium, I figured from the date that it was voted into vote that voters approved it. But actually, we've since learned and got the opinion that it's been written, so it's retroactive and it goes back to August, so the hundred eighty days actually expires January twenty ninth, the end of January. That does not give us much time to do anything. Now, we know selectmen can extend it another one hundred and eighty days, but that's not a given that they're going to do that either, so. I just want to make people aware of that.
Mark, you made a reference to an opinion. Whose opinion was it?
The opinion Diane's, I believe. Or Collier's, one or the other. I'm sorry, Jeff. Jesse told me a week or so ago, and he's not here to answer that, so I can't remember whether it was was James or I I actually now I think it was James and not and not Diane.
So we have opinion of counsel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that being said, anybody come up with any ideas or thoughts on how we should proceed with this?
Well, I guess we should look at the selectments calendar a little bit and figure out if we need to ask them to give an if they will give an extension, what meetings they would be scheduled for to pass on that.
Well, it would have to be at one of their meetings in January.
Yep.
And basically, the extension would be granted based on the fact that we are making progress. Now, what's progress? I think that's up to the selectmen to define.
Well, not this is going to be particularly favorable comment by my fellow board members, but we have such little time if we want to schedule a public hearing, and I and I I stated last meeting, I'll state again tonight, I think we should have a work session and get some air out some things worth thinking about as a board before we open up a public hearing, so.
That's someone I thought we're doing tonight, Jeff.
Okay, I didn't realize that. Fine.
Yeah, I thought that's what we decided the last time. We're gonna do that, and and the public hearing, we're gonna have to hold it the eleventh. It'd be nice to have a meeting before the scheduled earlier, but I don't think we can make the notification requirements.
Right.
Posting, so. So anybody come up with any ideas?
I mean, look, the the challenge from my perspective is as follows. When you when you, we already, I I think, I mean, the target of the moratorium was campgrounds. And so if you assume if you assume that that's really what people are concerned about, which I actually don't think that's actually the issue, then what you would do, I guess, is just increase the size of the sites. You would increase the buffering, you would you know, maybe require smokeless fire pits for people who don't like campfires. You know, which frankly, we we did that, right? I mean, there were some, we already increased the buffering and that was done, and that didn't that didn't, people didn't like that. What I really think is going on is people just don't want development. And so it's hard to, it's hard to attack that. It's hard to get at that through a campground moratorium. Yeah, so I don't. You know, it's hard to to policy plan when you're basically working off kind of a NIMBY type reactionary type moratorium. It's not something you could act. It's it's very hard to actually implement a policy where do we just want to ban campgrounds? That that's as we saw earlier, it's not really the issue. Because if someone were to put go to put built, let's say they get around campgrounds and they just start people start putting in developments. Is that is that okay? I don't think so. So I I I don't know. The the challenge is really trying to understand what people don't want. Because I think I think it's more than just campgrounds, but that's that's I'll throw it out there.
I I agree, Brett. The issue goes beyond campgrounds. There'd be a lot of ventures that could go into the residential business zone that would. Ventures that could go into the residential business zone that would be unacceptable and and are allowable under our current ordinance. But that's something we're gonna have to address through the comprehensive plan process, I guess. And right now, we've got a campground moratorium in front of us. It's specifically campground. That's what we have to deal with.
Yes, I think we either ban them and say no more campgrounds. Or you you pump up the, you know, you increase the lot, you increase the campsite size, you. Increase the buffering, you require smokeless fire pits, you maybe, you know, you better define kind of what it. Maybe we've got to clarify like today, this this border between what's a campground and what's a cottage. You know, we can kind of clarify that, but I think it's a matter of. If, you know, ban, if you're not gonna ban, then you, you know, sort of isolate them more. So they're not impacting neighbors if we really think that's the issue. And then clarifying the line of demarcation between campgrounds and other uses.
Right. I mean, it basically comes down to the impact on the surrounding neighbors.
Yeah.
And, and. You know, one thing I thought of is. Categories of campgrounds in a way, you know, if you have. Let's say ten campsites on twenty acres, probably the impact isn't gonna be that. You know, the density, of course, isn't, there's not much density there and the impact isn't be that great. Compared to, let's say, putting those same tents things on one acre. That sort of thing. So we could actually have, you know. Several categories. So, you know, if you're gonna have. And I'm just throwing numbers out there, ten campsites. The stands, standards are. These things, if we have a. Fifty's campsite standards are differently. I don't know, the devil would be in the details there.
I think you address that through the size of each site, like if you punch it out and make it a lot, the site size bigger. Or, you know, or, you know, the the minimum size for a site, then you naturally create. You know, a check on density because you'd have to have huge piece of land, you know. So. I don't know where we are now in terms of the site of the camp, you know, the, how big the site needs to be, but double it and see what that does.
You're saying the each campsite now requires five thousand, at least five thousand square feet.
Yeah, make it twenty thousand.
Make it more, greater, yeah.
I mean, that addresses the density, that starts to address the density issue.
Possibility. And how about, you pointed this out, you know, it sounds like we also need a more specific definition of a campground.
Yeah.
Especially due to changes in the industry itself.
Yeah, I think you're right, because we've now with what you can do with yurts, I mean, you can get yurts now that are like. You can live year round and they're nice. So the line has become blurred and it's now just a, it's continuum from. Literally like a dirt pad for a tent, you know, up through a cabin, it's, it's a, there's a continuum there. I don't see that we have a clear, you know, we don't have a clear line of demarcation. And I don't really understand what the motel motel pieces anyway, we haven't had one of those before us. But we should, at the very least, make clear when you cross that line.
Right. The motel thing came at one time, people were anticipating that. Someone would bring in a boat and dock it somewhere or more and allow people to use it for transient accommodations. So that's the motel idea.
Yeah.
Never happened, fortunately.
But could it?
What's that? I don't think it can, actually.
Why? What would stop at the ordinance?
I'd have to look through the whole.
I don't know, well, I think it'd be tough to do it on the ocean.
I would stick to campgrounds.
Yeah, I don't know what else you could, I don't know that you could, it'd have to be fresh water. I don't know where you could do that, but.
Why couldn't you, what would prevent you from getting a mooring in Seal Cove Harbor? And. Hooking up your boat and renting it out for six hundred dollars a night? Seems like a good idea.
We're getting away from campgrounds here. Let me see, we'll talk about motel some other time, okay?
What if we looked at the definition of dwelling and took out the requirement of cooking facilities?
Oh.
Well. That would mean that if I want to put a shed up on my yard, that it would be.
Right.
A dwelling unit, right?
No. Take a look at definitions. If you just take out cooking facility. That means things like what went on at the Katie Woods becomes. A whole, it falls under our subdivision requirements, it falls under a different review. Package. Remember, we struggled a lot with the whole cooking facility year, I mean, which was passed by the board specifically made sure it excluded. Hot plates and microwaves and toaster ovens and all that stuff. But we could, we could have looked at the applications completely differently if we didn't have to struggle with the cooking facility aspect of the definition.
But haven't the courts already determined this? I mean, there's case law saying what is a residential dwelling unit and it seems like our. Our definition basically complies with that.
No, specifically the statute of the state of Maine for dwelling units specifically does not include dwelling units. We talked about the one meeting I was before we left, before I left. It was furnished to us by one of the participants who at the pub, our public hearing. Gave us sites to state law and it does not include cooking facilities.
I, I don't know, I'd have to think, I don't know if there'd be unintended consequences there. I mean, is that really gonna address the issue of a camp? What do you think the issues that, I mean, what are you trying to achieve with that, Jeff?
I think what we're trying to look at is be able to have campgrounds, but have a more oversight on them. As to what becomes too much density. And our subdivision law prevents a lot of density and we could have provision similar to that. And it becomes easier put in if we eliminate cooking facilities in our definition of dwelling unit.
So essentially, it becomes a subdivision?
Yeah.
If you eliminate. Cooking facilities, then does every. Building with a bathroom become a dwelling unit?
I, we'd have to look at the definition, I mean, if you want to start dissecting more now, I mean, we're throwing out concepts for us to think.
Yeah, right. I guess just conceptually, I find myself, I don't know, resisting that. Because I feel like there's a, it's useful to be able to have some category of building. That you're sleeping in and going to the bathroom in, that's not a dwelling unit.
But we could look at our definite dwelling unit and how we define it and and it goes on and and. The one difference between that and the state law and and. Some of the campsites we've been looking at is the qualifier of cooking. That's it.
So. With what you're proposing. A campground similar to Katie Wilderness Lodge would become a subdivision. Is that right?
Potentially, I would need to look at.
Dwelling units. No, there is case law that says. A campground is not a subdivision. But I guess if they become residential dwelling units, it's not a campground and it's a subdivision. John, were you saying something?
Yes, the definition of a dwelling unit is a room or group of rooms designed and equipped exclusively for use as. Permanent seasonal or temporary living quarters for only one family at a time. Containing cooking, sleeping and toilet facilities. And I don't believe there's any state definition that's contrary to that, because that's where that definition came from.
I'll, I'll send you the site, John.
Okay. You know what it is?
Not sitting here, no.
It's state statute.
Yeah, it states that.
Thirty eight? No, would it be thirty?
Four hundred something, four twelve, four one, something like that. It's been a while since I looked at it.
I see Mister Adelman has had his hand raised and I'm sorry, Mister Adelman, we're not taking public comment tonight. But you'll be able to do that at the public hearing, but thank you. And how about minimum lot size for a campground? Is that something that might be nice?
Yeah, although it's, I find myself just like. I don't know, I guess it's probably worth thinking or talking about the idea of density and. I forget if it was Brett or Mark who were talking about like. If you have ten sites on ten acres, that's different than ten sites on twenty acres. And I'm thinking about sort of cluster development and some of the ideas that like, it actually might be. Lower impact, have ten sites on one acre than it is to have ten sites on twenty acres. And if you just did like a little parking lot campground and they're all right next to each other and. And then you've got your ten acres of woods that are just gets to remain woods and. It's just a sort of open question, and I think that minimum lot size is similar where, I don't know, like maybe we. Instead of having a minimum lot size, maybe we want to have a maximum lot size and say we only want small campgrounds. You know, maximum ten sites on a maximum of three acres and it's just these little like pocket little projects. Just as like a conceptual idea, as opposed to a forty acre, hundred and fifty site, like we don't want big things, we want lots of little small things. I'm not quite sure what the pros and cons would be of one, but I think there are multiple options to look at. Mark, you're muted.
Go ahead, Beth. I thought you were gonna say something.
No.
Oh.
Uh, Mark?
Yes.
Title thirty A. Maine statutes, section four, four, zero, one, subsection two.
Thank you. John, did you get that?
Are you looking at it? What does it say?
No, I'm not looking at it. I'm looking at my notes.
Somebody gave us. Somebody in the butter group there gave us that information.
Blossoms.
Are you looking? It's, it up or?
Yeah, go ahead, I'm looking.
Okay.
Any other ideas, folks? While he's looking.
I guess the other.
Go ahead.
The other sort of question for. I don't love the public, I guess, we had a public hearing would be like, to Brett's point, like, do we ban them entirely or not? I guess the other option is, do we restrict them to a specific zone that's smaller? Is there some part of Tremont where. We as a community are ready to say, yes, we do want campgrounds in this part as opposed to that part.
Well, that may be true, but that would mean changing zone boundaries. Before comprehensive plan gets adopted and then. Whatever is in there gets interpreted into the ordinances, so land use ordinance, so. I mean, if you, you want to change the zones, the boundaries before going through the comprehensive plan process?
No, that's not what I want, but I'm. But I also. Want to sort of. I don't know, listen to public comments if there are any, you know, sort of. Creative, clear comments about. That kind like, like campground specific changes. I mean, I think that there's a piece to this as we've all been talking like. As the planner, I mean, wants to say, no, like, let's go through the whole process, think about campgrounds in the context of our entire ordinance. And not try to address just campgrounds as a standalone thing. But the, I don't know, planning board person and me who wants to respond to the moratorium and say, okay, well, let's look at this one. Isolated issue and see if there's anything we can do looking at just this one issue alone.
And we've already got a second issue.
Lawson, you said, you were talking before and you said something about. Maybe ten sites on one acre. But you mean. A concentration of campsites, but yet a bigger lot, not just a one acre lot with ten campsites, correct?
I, I think there's two different issues that are related, one of which is density and the other which is scale. And I think that, let's see, I don't yet know or have a. An opinion about whether. Big campground, like a few big campgrounds are better than many few small ones. I still don't have an opinion about whether, like, spread out sprawly campgrounds. Are better than small, compact, efficient ones. I think there, I foresee some pros and cons to. All, all conditions.
Could we look at the def, try to define light commercial? Which would come down and work on your issue of density and scale and so forth. If we work on what light commercial, find a definition for it within our statute. That would apply to this campground applications for small lots and larger lots.
Oh, there's a tough question. Where would you draw the line, Jeff?
I'm not trying to draw a line, I'm trying to raise the issue of if we use as a tool to help us draw those lines.
Yeah, and in that definition, there's something about like, within the capacity of the land, like you've got a. Development that the land can handle and it's not super specific, but I think that you're right, Jeff, it like that does. Begin to give us some framework of trying to. I mean, the next step is to get quantitative about it, something that we can actually, it's something that's measurable, where we can say, oh. This is the threshold that is light and this is the threshold that's not.
We, we know that of the literally hundreds of letters we got, light commercials pounded into our heads. And we knew as a board, light commercial doesn't have any standards to it, so it became a difficult aspect to argue. Or to meet for by the applicant and for us to review as a board, so.
I mean, even more than that, Jeff, it wasn't actually a criteria we reviewed at all, because it's not, it just simply isn't. A criteria that we re-review, it's, it's, it's just not part of, it's not anything that we actually, it's not a standard that we.
Not standard, yeah.
So I don't, I think the way to do it again is what you're, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a. It's just another way to get to the density and size issue. And.
You know, you could move it down into the standard category so long as we get some definitions and work on it. Then we can handle the scale and density issue Austin's bringing up.
So you would apply the word light, you bring light commercial into just the review standards of a campground?
Well. As you well know, we have the comprehensive plan rattling around, so I don't want to start suggesting we do an overall zone review. But we are trying wrestle with the one issue of campgrounds. And this is a way of moving it for, for the purposes of this moratorium. Look at light commercial and try to find as to apply to campgrounds. Obviously, I like, you know, I think good planning would have light commercial defined for all activities in the town, but that's not what's before us, unfortunately.
One way that I'm sort of connecting these dots is that in the question about trying to define density and the question about defining size, if we refer back to the RB zone description, which is where light commercial appears, it's like, okay, well, let's, when we come up with our density requirements and, and maybe the goal is like, make it lighter, like, so we should, like, it should be a less dense and a smaller sale, scale would be a way to define later. And we're just sort of moving in, in that direction a little bit, moving the ordinance in that direction. Those will be some proposals or proposals we could then ask for public feedback on.
Would there be a cap on the number of campsites in a campground? And is that based on the size of the acres available?
Yeah, maybe there's some sort of like metro, you know.
Ratio.
A ratio where it's, because I, I mean, I think that like you're and maybe the smaller acreage, the denser we permit. And so if you're only doing one acre, you're allowed ten, ten sites per acre. But if you're doing a hundred acres, you can't have ten sites per acre, then it's, then it's shifts. And I don't know exactly what those numbers are, but the basic idea is that.
Yeah, formula.
Right.
I, I, I don't think we want to discriminate against smaller lot owners that would like to have some campsites as, as revenue, I mean, source. So I think a formula, as Beth suggests, or some sort of ratio, it may be a way we can address that.
So what if we had a public hearing on January eleventh and invited the public to provide comments on maybe two or three questions that we could then, we could sort of present? I think we know that there's going to be some degree of, I mean, a public, a public hearing, like, we aren't in complete control of their, of what people want to say, but if we can share what our three questions are that might help us get some answers to the questions that we actually have.
And, and why that approach rather than just letting them say what they think? And then we go from there.
Well, they're gonna say they don't want a campground, period.
Well, then we know that.
Not everybody will say that.
Well, the ones that comment are the ones that don't want anything. You very rarely will get anybody to comment who is positive. All negative.
I, I will say this, I know that concerned Tremont residents have hired a landscape architect slash planner to make some recommendations to them about how to proceed. Now, I'm sure they want to present that and at that public hearing as well.
With on the campground?
Yeah, on the campground moratorium. They have, they have suggestions.
Which might be very helpful. I mean, we're struggling. I, I've just kept some informal notes. I've come up with about ten different things that collectively we have thrown out to think about. And, and all of them have some merit, all of them have some problems, but all of them address campground issues. So I'm, I'm not sure if you just throw it open or, or we look at our minutes from this meeting if, if it includes the thing, some of the things I've, I've made notes for myself. It, it might be more fruitful in taking us in a direction that will end up with some meaningful changes.
That would be nice.
Well, have we discussed this enough? And you're ready to move on, schedule a public hearing, get comments or?
Yes.
Do we, do we, do we want to? Again, you know, I come back to the issue which, which was suggested I bring it up again now is should we be sure we have a an attorney or a planner that helped us work through some of these issues, have some experience versus us laypeople who are struggling to find things that hopefully work for our town? And so if we have, you know, what I have, all of them included in my list of ten, twelve, fourteen items. You know, a planner can look at some of these and say, this would never work. This is a great way of approaching it. And here's what's been done in other municipalities. I mean, we're flying very blind here and I, I think that's how mistakes get made and how we get into some of these issues.
Well, we can't make that decision ourselves. That has to be a decision of the board of selectmen, I believe. And we can make that request.
You want me to move it? Or, or can we just do, I tried to last time and.
Well, hold on a second. I do know that the legal bills have been sky high for the planning board, thanks to campgrounds, campground stuff we've been dealing with and and hopefully they will, if we do make a motion and ask them, request of them to hire someone to guide us through this process, that they will approve it. So if you want to make that motion, go right ahead.
So moved that we request the selectmen to allow us to retain a, a planner or an attorney or other similar professional that can help us go through this process of, of the campground, campground issues as it relates to zoning.
I have a second.
I'll second and then open up for discussion.
Yeah, okay, we have a motion second on the table to ask the board selectmen to hire either a legal counsel or a planner to aid us in this whole thing involving campground regulations. Any discussion?
I definitely think that's, I would welcome guidance and direction. And, but I guess my question, Jeff, is do we want to leave it up to the select board to choose who that professional is? Or is that, are we gonna ask John to select that person or Jesse? Like, who decides who to hire?
Well, the way I ordered it was that was left open. I, I don't think we should say who to hire.
No.
Are we asking the select board to be the determination?
Well, I, I, you know.
Probably Jesse, Jesse will advise.
Jesse has some recommendations. He, you know, found his counsel and so forth and he's probably seen more planners and so forth and their, and their work product. Yep. I think the town manager probably advised selectmen on that. And, and I, you know, if we make a recommendation or, or who knows that they're even going to be available. So anyway. Any more discussion? Hearing none.
Can I make one comment, please?
Mr. Edelman, with all due respect. Okay, you, you can, you can please make your, at, at the public hearing, you're welcome to make comments, okay, but.
All right, this could be helpful, but that's.
What do you think, gang?
Mark, you have the ability to address someone in public if you want. I mean.
Go right ahead. Make it quick, please.
We, we've hired a planner. We're happy to make him available to you guys to talk to. He's not got a, an agenda. He's just a planner who understands how to do this.
And you received his CD.
Thank you. I think that would be inappropriate. But thank you for the offer.
I, I don't think it'd be inappropriate. What conflict do you see, Mark?
I, I don't think, do you think the optics are okay with that, Jeff, really?
I don't.
Asking.
I mean, really?
First of all, their planner can make their case for them. They'll have that opportunity. We're not going to hire their planner to advise us or, or even ask their planner to advise us.
It's, it's not as though it's an applicant. It's, it's residents of the town, our residents in our town have hired, and it's not a planner for a applicant before us.
Yeah, but I mean, look, Jeff, they're, they're a party opposing an applicant. It's an organized opposition against an applicant. It's not that, I, 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 I'm astounded that you don't think that that the optics of that would be, would, would look good.
It's a conflict of interest.
Okay, I'm gonna call for a vote. We have a motion on the table. Jeff?
Did, did you say me?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Myself, yes. That's five, zero. Make that request to selectmen. Okay. We got that. Now we have to talk about the public hearing. Our next meeting is the eleventh of January. And we can set the public hearing for that date. I would say by zoo, by Zoom. And I'd also request anybody making submissions to provide them. Well, John, John, let me ask you, are you only working Tuesdays now?
Yes.
So if for submissions to get in our packet, they'd have to be in on Tuesday rather than Thursday, correct? Before the meeting.
Oh, your pockets were ready Thursday.
No, what, what I'm asking is I'm trying to avoid getting emails sent on the day of the meeting or whatever. It, it, it's much cleaner. We need to get any submissions in our packets. And I'm trying to determine when a dead, set a deadline for that. If you're only working Tuesdays, I want to know if that's the day the submission should be due, or if we make it a Thursday, will they be able to get into tack, packet some other way? Traditionally, we do Thursday before the meeting.
Make it Thursday before the meeting. We'll work something out.
Okay, at noon, noon before the meeting, would that work out okay with you?
Noon on the Thursday before the meeting.
Yeah, does that make sense? Or the Tuesday before?
I always think more time is easier when people are getting things done, but it's up to you.
I mean, for who, the making this, people making the submissions or? Yeah. Thursday noon is fine with me. Would, any, anybody else have any objections to that? Or anybody have any objections to that? Okay. Okay, I'll take a motion to set a public hearing for comments on proposed changes to campground standards.
What are the? I mean, what are the proposed changes to the campground standards? Are, are we asking for comments on the proposed?
Comments, comments on, you know, any, well, maybe I didn't phrase that right. Okay. For comments on campground standards, how's that? Public comments on campground standard.
Yeah.
And changes, changes to campground standards. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for Tuesday, January eleventh at six PM by Zoom for public comment on campground standards in land use ordinance.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion is second on the table to schedule a public hearing for Tuesday, January eleventh, six PM by Zoom for the public to make comments on possible changes to campground standards. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Jeff.
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Five, zero. Okay. We've got the public hearing set. We should also set the date for the next meeting, which is January eleventh. How about a motion for that?
I'll make, make a motion to schedule our next regular meeting for the planning board on Tuesday, January eleventh by Zoom at six PM.
Following the public hearing, maybe?
Following the public hearing.
Okay. Have a second?
My second.
Motion second on the table to set the date for our next regular meeting for January eleventh. Following the public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none?
Well, one comment to you, Mark. You and John, who are going to sit down and make the agenda for that evening. I presume we're not going to put any big matters on as well as the public hearing because I anticipate public hearing and our discussions might take some time.
I would think so, yeah.
Of the other item, the other item, we might have a legal opinion about what constitutes whether this particular application constitutes a campground or not. Keeping in mind, the moratorium ends the twenty ninth of January.
Okay. We might have to deal with that, but we don't necessarily have to consider the application, right, for pointing head if the opinion, if we decide that it is a campground?
Is our next meeting after that, January twenty fifth? I don't, didn't have that scheduled.
Yes, it is.
The twenty fifth and you know, if we, we need an extra meeting, we, we could squeeze it in there, maybe.
So we could handle that opinion on that night?
The twenty fifth? I don't think the opinion is going to take a long time. I don't know. We'll see. Let's not worry about scheduling then now. We've got the meeting scheduled. And, and John and I will talk about that and we'll see what's going on. How's that sound good? Did we vote on the regular meeting? No, we didn't.
Nope.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Jeff.
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Myself, yes. And I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second on the table to adjourn. All in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Thanks, folks. John, thanks. Good to have you back on board.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.